Good evening, it is 6:30 and I will call our Monday, October 28th meeting to order.
Joel?
I am here.
Leah?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
And Tom's not even with us this evening.
Slurin?
Uh-oh.
Has our meeting then probably not?
Yes.
Please join me in the present.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to like to read the mission statement. Sure. Mount Morbury School District Partnership with the Community is dedicated to nursing, educating, challenging all students, and preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society. Anthony, number two, approval of the agenda. Someone?
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Adam, to approve our agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approval of our October 7th board regular meeting minutes.
I think a motion to approve the October 7th meeting minutes.
No, second motion by Sarah and second by Carly. All those in favor of our October 7th board regular meeting minutes, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, addressing the board. Considering the approval of the Mount Morbury High School softball team traveling to Florida. You have a whole lot of girls.
I know, you're helping us. Want to stand up and introduce yourself?
I'm Jeremy Holman. I've been coach here for the last sevenish years. And the last four or five years of parents and girls who want to do a spring break trip to play some ball, we just had to pursue it. And a lot of teams around the area are doing it. They kind of get laid up on us, so they get about five or six games, and while we're sitting here just practicing. And a lot of these girls have showed up, and they've put a lot of time and effort into the program during the summer times, winter times. And I got a good group of seniors coming through, like five or six girls. It'd kind of be a nice little send-off where we could start this going forward, where all the reward done for all the time they've done. And then maybe do this every two or three years with all the girls coming up, so everybody gets a chance to experience, because there's nothing better than playing ball in Florida, or the Gulf Shores, or whatever. And these girls are putting Mount Morbury on the map for softball. We've played softball for 30 years here. You know what I mean? Like, these girls are putting them on the map. So then my wife and the parents have done a lot of screening, getting everything organized, so she can take over with all the other stuff there.
Oh, sure. Okay, so we are hoping to take our varsity girls over spring break. So we're just gonna start off with varsity roster for now. This is our first time doing this. The JV team will stay and practice back here with our JV coaches. So the entry fee is $1,075 to get in. We are asking our softball club for this donation. So if we can pick this approved tonight, then these girls will go to softball club meeting and then ask for that donation from them. We will be traveling to Destin, Florida. It is a stay-and-play tournament. So they give us three hotels to choose from. This island resort has condos, so we thought more than one family could stay in a condo. And then they do have a kitchenette, so then that's something that we could, you know, we would have to eat out every single meal. And it's about 15 minutes from where we'll play. We did send a survey out to all the parents and players, just asking about if they would be interested in going, and then if they would be responsible for their daughter and the hotel stay. So we're hoping to travel just like the baseball team is, parents would be responsible for their child, their player. We did look into us for 12 girls, $25,000. It just didn't seem feasible. So we're also doing the, please get your child there, your player there, you can drive, you can fly. So that's what we're thinking. So that's the survey. Yeah, so we're hoping to raise $15,000. So that's what our group of moms and parents have gotten together. We have some ideas. Norris Golf Hall did just reach out to us. They would like to help us out with a nine-pin tap journey. So I think that would raise a lot of money, so that would be helpful. And then the tournament, the gentleman in charge of the tournament would help us with, like, organizing activities. There's a lot to do with the resort that we're there, so, yeah. But we will play, because we start earlier than baseball, so then we can play Tuesday through Friday or Saturday down there. So we can actually have some games down there, so, yeah. Any questions? Girls have anything to add?
Do you want to introduce yourself? Since you came on this board. Morgan Monroe, softball.
Morgan Monroe, senior.
I'm Jason Williams, senior.
I'm Hallie Klein, senior.
I'm Julie Goodman, and I'm a sophomore.
Thank you for your help in organizing all of this, Coach. Mrs. Holman, remarkable. Board members, we offer our fullest endorsement of this trip to Destin, Florida, for your consideration, please.
So this is during your normal practice, so there's no, like, WIA? We don't provide any WIA, extra content and stuff?
No.
Perfect.
Because we actually started the week before. We've been on spring breaks, we'll already have in five or six practices before we go.
Okay.
That was my only question.
Right.
What are it like?
Any questions? Anything you want to move through?
Who to approve this trip?
Second. Motion by Adam, second by Sarah, to approve the Mount Morbury High School softball team traveling to Florida for spring break. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Awesome.
Can you commemorate this special event by taking a picture of the softball team with our board?
Yes, but please protect pictures. We like pictures. Should I go down on the floor?
Yeah.
Or should I take the old trap, right? There's a price.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, every picture that I want, we go to that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I love that idea.
Do the happy guy get the whole picture up there?
Is there a marketing person paying attention to our background?
One more battery.
All right. One more battery.
She's paying attention.
All right.
Right, just wait, should I go down on the floor?
Yeah.
Or should I take the old trap, right? There's a price. Oh, wait, every picture that I want, we go to that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I love that idea.
Do the happy guy get the whole picture up there?
Is there a marketing person paying attention to our background?
One more battery.
All right. One more battery.
She's paying attention.
All right. Okay. All right, ready? One, two, three, smile. All right, we're gonna do one more, just in case of the bullets. All right, ready? One, two, three, smile. Got it.
That's terrific.
Thank you, guys.
What you do, I appreciate that extra mile. You guys are literally making the staff feel that's terrific.
All righty, Dr. Slantoff, this is close.
Well, in addition to this fantastic news about our people heading to Destin, just in the past 24 hours, we have a lot of celebrations occurring in our school community. First, of course, our cross-country team. Boy, did they have a great literal run at sectionals this past Friday afternoon. And that was matched by an outstanding football game on Friday night. And then wouldn't you know it, our Lady Vikings, our volleyball team, had a fantastic showing on Saturday night. All three of these teams are advancing to the next round. And so we're so grateful for their exemplary academic, or excuse me, athletic prowess. I should say academic, too, because I believe, word has it, that our football team has...
All three?
Three, three All-State, Athletic All-State.
That's what I heard. Yeah, how about that?
Do you happen to remember the names of the Little Duck, please?
Oh, Zach McGuire, Talon Stoner, and...
Eli Erins.
Eli Erins, yes.
He was also the lead in the musical. So this kid is not, like, tackling up right now, literally.
Gosh. Well, and that's an excellent point. Thank you, because indeed, next Thursday night, a week from this week, is our opening of our musical. If you haven't got tickets, you might have to go to Starbucks, because I'm finding that the tickets are hard to come to buy, and the kids have just been working so hard, the staff has been working so hard in order to launch that. And then I would be remiss if I did remind everybody, we are now eight days removed from an important election, and we hope that all of our community members who are listening might take the opportunity to vote on our upcoming candidate question.
Any board members have other school names? While you're pondering, for those of you who weren't part of the student interviews, Nola Gilmore is going to be our student rep. She is fantastic, but she is also in the musical, so she will be joining us at the second meeting in November.
Go here, secretary. Aye. November 8th is our Veterans Day event, so it's not gonna be a Veterans Day on Monday, it's the event Friday prior to during that 9:10 dead time. So just as a piece of news from up at, I don't know if you'll need to get tired of that, so you should know that's coming up.
Anyone else? All right, any citizens count?
Yes, we have. Callie Icarison.
Hi. My name is Callie Icarison. And in addition to having a couple things in the district, I also teach at the middle school. I'm here tonight just on behalf of MHEA and to share some news. Last week was a super busy week for the music department. We had our first two formal concerts besides our marching band, many, many performances. Our high school strings and choir had their concert on Monday night, and then our eighth-grade band Choir and Arisha had their concert on Tuesday night. And it was really great to see our auditory impact and kids celebrating each other and getting a chance to show off mid-October learning already. So it was really, it was great. It's a good feeling to be back making formal concerts happen again.
How did things go with the parent London meeting last night?
I wasn't there, but I heard from Callie and Matt that things went well. Yeah, they had lots of parents there, in person, and lots of people streaming from online, so things are rolling. They're getting there.
You guys did a fantastic job hosting the gentleman who's responsible for putting on the whole parade. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, it was great. We're rolling along with those things. Yeah. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Callie. All right, moving on. Number four, personnel transaction. Slurin, anything to note?
Yes, board members, I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize a staff member who is preparing to retire with the approval of the board. I'm referring to our very dear Chris Farrell. Chris has been with the Mount Morbury School District since 2008 there. She started serving with us as a paraprofessional. And in 2021, she looked for something new, and she's currently serving as an administrative assistant to the front office. I saw this in her evaluation, and I thought this just speaks perfectly to Chris. It says that she is just exemplary at developing positive and trusting relationships with students as well as parents and staff. If you know Chris, you know her, just be one of the gems in the crown that is the Mount Morbury School District. School community, I'm just so grateful to her. And she's gonna be spending some time, maybe watching after her grandchild now, a little bit, and so she'll be leaving us a kid sometime in mid-January. So please join me in thanking her for outstanding contributions to our district.
Anyone else to make a motion to approve our personnel transactions? Someone? Second. Motion by Leah, second by Carly, to approve personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out to discuss? Anyone like to make a motion to approve? Someone? Second. Motion by Sarah, second by Leah, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Discussion items, our committee member reports. Adam, do you want to start with the education committee?
Yeah, absolutely. Back on October 7th, covered a lot of ground, pretty usual. Got an update on our Act 20 implementation. Did, sounded like everyone, everything with Mount Morbury's gonna do, diagnostic testing, hit the kids who demonstrated particularly first. And we followed it up later on with their other reading plans for the kids who are next here. The grading assessment updates, the evidence-based grading, talking about an update on that. Really a lot of great cooperation, collaboration between the teacher, not just the teachers who are leading the classes, but also their whole departments that are working through that together to share ideas and information. Since we'll be rolling this out through all classes eventually. Equity work update. We kind of touched base again on their, the IDEI, the Inter-Cultural Development Inventory results. Sarah was kind enough to share her experience, went through that plan, which was great for us to hear, because a lot of us are familiar with it, but just haven't taken it ourselves, too. And I know that we were just kind of universally praising her, praising the administration for continuing this work. So happy to see that that's going forward. We had a 4K presentation. Colte was there, talking through the whole history of the 4K program and the one fact that she brought out, I'll make sure I get this one correct, that the first 4K cohort in our district are now freshmen in this district. Pretty cool. Very happy with the progress there. We went ahead and signed agreements, contracts with each of the providers that we have. Moving forward with that. And we approved our submission waiver to DBI on the tiebreaker system for the Wisconsin Guarantee Plan. That's just, it was basically a formality, making sure that we could, if you don't put the paperwork in, you can't have the tiebreaker. So we just put that in, and they're gonna be working through the tiebreaker procedures.
Awesome. Any questions, Brad? Eric, do you have anything on the community coalition?
Our meeting was scheduled for October 21st, but it was canceled.
I have a short board report. They met on the 2nd of October. In addition to Nola joining our school board, she has also joined the village board, along with Adam's daughter, Siobhan, as one of their student reps. So she will be able to update us on the village and school happenings. And the only other thing that I would say that was relevant to the school district is they decided to set aside five acres of Lucky Arm to specifically be designated for affordable housing. So there's gonna be a lot of mixed use, but they are, I think, I believe they're seeking some grant funding to help with that. And then they may need it next week. 6B, National Bank Laureate, Alisa and Craig.
And we also have Amy Felson, she will be teaching one of our IV courses. Yeah, and we'll update you all on her journey. Fancy apple. You and Cody, I tell ya. All right, so we started our journey with IV July of 2022. And last year, we went through the process of candidacy, where we had to get approved for that, and now we are currently in a process of authorization. So we are preparing to get our school ready before some of the upcoming visits. So if you, I know we do have some new faces, so we are gonna go through a little bit of background as far as the components of the IV program. And we'll have some teachers here that, we're so lucky that Julie has the perspective on with us, who are teaching AP and will be teaching IV classes. So kind of giving you her lens from an educator's perspective of going to training. And we also have Craig here, who's our school-to-career and IV coordinator. And he's been doing a lot of backend work with getting things rolling as we're preparing for some pretty important upcoming visits. So we're working a lot, and we're glad to be here to share and work with you. So a few years ago, Mount Morbury High School, we went through creating our mission, mission statement. And I think one of the biggest and most important components of this, it's all very important, but our SCAP committed to really focusing on advancing post-secondary readiness and offering experiences so students can plan for their futures. And I think the IV program really aligns well with that, as we are looking at a healthcare pathway. And currently, our programming offerings doesn't really, we don't really have something that really straightlines with that. In addition to that, the IV mission statement is aiming to prepare students to have an intercultural understanding. And what better way to prepare our students for post-secondary readiness, whether it is going to a two- or four-year university, or going into the workforce, as we know, as adults, we do have to be, have that intercultural understanding and respect for others. So I really appreciate that about the IV. But their mission statement is really giving us that global perspective and really thinking about problems, not just in our Mount Morbury ones, but also the global impact and understanding of those as well. So the reason why we went with a healthcare pathway, this is a little bit of data for you all. We submitted a survey to students, and 42% of students surveyed, and we surveyed what would be our first cohort of learners, which would be our current sophomores, up into the juniors and seniors that were in our building at the time. 42% of students said that patient care would be a top career pathway of interest. Also, we have a wonderful host group, which is Health Occupation Student Association, that is run by teacher Tom Lazar and Alexa Vesely. And they've been working so much in the backend, and last year, they had seven members, and their membership has increased to 37 in one year. So they have done a really great job of bringing different speakers in that are currently in healthcare, and speaking to students about what their experience has been, pros and cons of every job, just to kind of get students thinking about what might be a potential option for them in the future. And we also have seen a 35% increase in students taking anatomy and physiology between the 23 and 24 school years long.
Can you continue on that? Hi, I'm Craig Smith. That's Lisa. I have a minute. Everybody get, both do, people get there, I'm sure. So statistics that just came out from Wisconsin Healthcare Workforce Report, so we read the Bureau Labor Statistics, 45% of all future employment is gonna be in healthcare, and we have a huge gap coming because of the silver labor retirement of our boomers. I did not coin that phrase, it's out there. As a guy who went straight to light, I don't judge. So the second one is really where we're trying to make headway within our district. We've positioned ourselves really well with work that's been done prior, and adding this IV, where we can get some dual credit emphasis, where we can position our students to go on, whether it's to be a registered nurse, to be a certified nursing assistant, or to be a doctor, all the different aspects that come with the medical field. We power and have a clearly defined, successful, satisfying career pathway, plays an important role, and students willing to enter the industry. And with this program, we're gonna be able to offer a direct, through the DPI, a direct patient care pathway to our students. So we'll have a designed process for our students to enter this career pathway and help fill that void. And then we can look at a geographic where we're located, the access we have to all the different worlds of medical, including some things being done on the science research side that's now getting closer to us, that we are in a great location physically within the state to access this for our students moving forward as well.
So a little bit with our timeline, so I previously mentioned that. So in that 2023 school year, we submitted our application for candidacy, and we received some different feedback of things that we needed to adjust. I went to head of school training. Also during the 23 and 24 school year, we went through the process of hiring our IV CP coordinator, which is Craig. We also had some staff that dedicated a lot of time in the summer of 2024 to go to training. And now we're in the process where our staff are writing their course outlines, and those actually get submitted for approval during our authorization process. So that's where we're currently at. Our courses are being submitted today, so the 28th. And we have an upcoming visit from our IV manager, which will be November 4th and 5th. Some of you may be coming. So we might see you during that time. We also have a few different parents that Craig has thoughtfully included in our process that will be part of, oh, wait, you're here, oh, Sarah, that will be part of that interview process with our IV manager, Lori. And she actually will be coming to our Board of Education Committee meeting, so you will be able to put a face to a name during that time as well. So once we go through this pre-authorization visit, Lori will give us some feedback with things that we need to adjust. We will then open our application for authorization, get all of our things uploaded, and then we have a full, like, visit, visit that will happen in February?
We have, once we go through our consultant visit, we then can, once the paperwork comes in from Lori, we, after we get that, we can then go over it. And there's an expected amount of time in which we'll review, make adjustments as needed, know where we need to address some issues, and then we can put in for our visit six to eight weeks after that time. So we're looking, hopefully, for that February, March timeline.
And again, I know that we, when I visited previously, we're like, well, what if we don't get approved? The IV is very good at providing feedback and allowing for the schools that they're working with to make those adjustments and work on that feedback. So I really, we were in a very good spot, so I'm very confident with our upcoming visit in November, and also our additional authorization visit that's coming up for that. So the goal of all this is by the fall of 2025, we will have our first cohort class and our IV courses running. So even students that may choose to be in a full IV CP program, that would be that cohort, or we'll also have various IV classes that will be accessible for every student, whether they want to do the full IV CP pathway, or if they just want to try to try out an IV course. So when we're talking about the full IV CP program, there are additional things that students have to complete on top of taking IV courses. So if a student is enrolled to do the full IV CP program at the end of their two-year program, and if they've met all the criteria, they are awarded with an IV certification. And that's something that they can put on a resume or a college application. One of the components that is a requirement is students have to take one career-related course that is offered through our CTE department. As you all know, we have a phenomenal CTE department, and they are very excited for this opportunity for us to be offering the IV program. So examples of those courses would include our biotechnology course. We have also been exploring a medical terminology course, and this is if a student has already taken all the courses that we have available and accessible to them. In addition, we also have had students that have taken CNA courses, or if students are currently doing a youth apprentice trip within a health science field, that would qualify for that career-related course. In addition to that CTE course, students have to successfully pass two IV courses with exams. So the IV exams are scored on a one-to-seven scale. They do have to receive a score of four or above. What you're noticing on post-secondary websites, when we're looking at credits that are provided to students that take IV courses, you normally see a student needing to get a five or above to receive any post-secondary credits. The two courses that we will have available for students to take is a business management course that would run over two semesters, and a sports, exercise, and health science course that would run over two years at a high level for four semesters. In addition to the two IV courses, the career-related study, students will also take a personal professional skills course. During that course, they will also work on a reflective project. They will complete a specific program of service learning hours that is linked to the health science field. And there is a language development component that can either be met with taking one of our current language courses at Mount Morbury High School, or we are looking at a portfolio option for students to be able to identify their language proficiency. You normally look at language proficiency according to the job type. So we're looking into a medical option for students showing proficiency within some language. An exposure. Craig, it's all you now.
Yeah, thank you. So when we look at the learner profile, learner profile comes down to ten attributes that we will advertise throughout our building, refer to as the IV learner profile. When you look back at your breakthrough 2032 process and what we were looking for out of our students and what our community was looking for to get out of us to help develop our students, I did, but it's Lisa. Oh, I'm back.
That's me, I'm back.
Oh! Oh, thanks. So we look at breakthrough 2032, the three I can speak to very confidently and whether it's because of the ten pieces that we just saw. But there's another part that goes back to the teacher, what makes us a little unique in the IV program. There's part of the approaches to learning that our teachers are going through by building their course outline. Also has the five elements of thinking, communication, which are already on those ten of a profile. But it also has research, self-management, using those social skills of understanding our strengths, our challenges, how we can get through those processes, as well as social skills. As teachers, we went through this last Thursday. Our IV staff got to meet for a while and go over these processes and what they mean and how they can help with the influence for Principal Lundquist of the culture and caring in our building and what we're teaching our students. So besides the ten that we seek here, there's also five. And part of that approach is learning that our staff was putting within these courses to help bring those things to life. So not only having a student go through an assignment or a research, but identifying what skills they're developing while they're doing it in real time and working with those students to help identify. And a big part of this is that in your piece and building those skills, the acquirers are the other one that really stands out when you look at IV of teaching lifelong learners and identifying the skills it's going to take to go through that. Besides just these ten pieces, is there any questions? Anything that Lisa talked about or shown us before? Are we good with the tempo? All right, so core requirements, I mean, talk about personal professional skills. Between personal professional skills, it is ninety hours that is required. We already know that that's actually going to go up. We are set for that. The personal professional skills course allows our students in real time from those two IV DP classes to sit and reflect on the things happening and uplift what's happening in that room and how to better support it. This is where you're going to get a lot of identification of the skills that we want our students to develop, those not only hard skills, but the soft skills that we know is a gap right now and identifying those and having students work with them and using our employers and our partners to help with that process. So the things listed on here are the processes that students are going to go through. It runs both junior and senior year. We will have one-year options for all of our students to be able to take a course like this. But then for the IVs process, we have put embedded in this personal professional skills course, our language development fifty required hours, as well as our reflective projects, which I'm going to get to here shortly. Though in fact, the TOT project is a three thousand-word, two-year essay that the students are asked to research and have arguments for both sides. So when we met a young lady at Reagan High School in Milwaukee, she was a female student of color identifying why other females of color aren't misidentified in medical more than others. And men had to take as a young female of color, the opposite approach in saying, why is that happening on the end of the consumer? And identifying both sides, we are really focused on. We know this is a social emotional we did in advisory a couple of weeks ago that we had of telling students how to have a conversation without being defensive, without trying to be a swearer, but truly learn, not only in words, but the physical that you're giving back for people and what you're selling, that you guys all do an awesome job right now, right? But that's something that can be taught and learned and we've done. So just re-solidifying some of those skills, we're already doing it in advisory. But to be able to reinforce it on a larger level, we're seeing both sides and arguing is okay, right? And this project does that. What I really liked about the three thousand-word essay that is part of that PPS class, if you're not a writer, but you want to talk like me, you can do fifteen hundred words and then a seven-minute video. So there's options for our students to deliver what they've learned and then they also get to grade themselves on their process, what they did with their teachers or teammates. Our service learning portfolio, it's a lot like what we already know about Silver Court. The biggest difference is students doing this are going to do it focused in a possible career outcome. So doing service learning that'd be high with intention, doing something with our new power partnership outline that's going to benefit both the medical staff there or their customers as well as our students. So it's not just volunteering for volunteering's sake, which I know is a terrible way to identify it. But now we want them to volunteer with a purpose and there's going to be a portfolio aspect of identifying what your volunteering did for you. What of those ten attributes did you use? What were you a thinker as a volunteer? And bringing them back, now reflect, how did you handle this? Is there anything that happened that let that social emotional kick in while underlying the medical field as a whole? Again, trying to help with that emotional overload that can come with some of these healthcare fields. And our core requirements, Lisa covered it very well. This is also something in IV that is going to continue to go through a process. It's not just a language requirement, but they're also going to add a culture element to it to better identify and understand other cultures, experiencing those cultures, what those different aspects mean. It's going to be part of that language development portfolio. That's a fifty average hours requirement. Again, that time is embedded in PPS and those students will be supported through that process by the PPS teacher as well as Prat, who's working with us to develop this portfolio as well. Our business management course, so the difference between the SL and the HL is number of hours students spend in the classroom. An HL class, high-level class, is two hundred and forty classroom hours. An SL class is a hundred and fifty hours, one-year versus two-year experience. So in the business management classes, that serves as our capstone, which we're finding is, once you're done with accounting two, where do we go? Once we're done with sports and entertainment marketing, where do we go? And now we'd be able to give a capstone class where we're taking all the parts of our business program, which is dynamized by the way. And now we're saying, take those computer skills, take those sales skills, take some numbers and figure out how the whole picture works. Learn a little bit about the HR side. Learn a bit about the HR, learn a bit about operations logistics, it's such a growing trait. And how we can identify how to properly use AI in the world of business is part of the curriculum now. Identifying proper times to use it, how to use it and how it can help us in our business management course.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. You got a slide, okay.
I have one slide. The other course we're offering is the sports exercise and health science course. This is, we're running it as a HL course, higher level, so that's over the course of two years. Mr. Tom Lazar will be the year one teacher and then I will be the year two teacher for this course. It is, the intent of this course is to prepare students that are interested in a career in health services, health sciences, but also for students interested in sports as well. So there is some psychology components, there's physiology and anatomy components. There is a lot of biology components as well, so nutrition, endocrine systems, those sort of things. And then there's some physics components as well with biomechanics. So students that are possibly interested in PT or OT, they would find some benefit from this course as well. Similar, so to compare it to an AP course. So I have experience teaching AP Bio and currently I'm teaching AP Chem. There are quite a few similarities. It is college-level content, it moves at a rapid pace. And at the end of their time, they are assessed with a formal standardized test. Similarly to AP, the standardized test includes multiple choice as well as essay-style questions. And it's over the course of several hours that test, similar to AP, where they may be testing for like three hours on one morning or one afternoon. So that, those are the similarities. In terms of differences, I think the IV philosophy of that intercultural perspective, when we are looking at sports, we are encouraged not just to look at sports that we're familiar with in the United States and making sure that we're getting intercultural perspectives on that. Same with nutrition and other parts of this curriculum is not just to focus on what we know here and what we expect here with sports and psychology and nutrition in the United States. I think another difference between AP and IV would be the, how do I word this? The students are required to participate in research of their choosing as part of this course. And so at some point within those two years, they have to identify a topic that's interesting to them. They have to research that topic and then they have to complete research. They will write a paper and then that paper is assessed internally. So I would be scoring that paper that they write. But then it is uploaded and it's also like jury by graders throughout the country. Actually, probably throughout, throughout the world. And so that is a big difference in terms of one of the commitments these students would be taking on. As a college student who did college-level research, I think giving these students that opportunity to do that as a high school student is really going to set them apart when they get to that collegiate level. Because they can go to the PI in the lab and say, you know, I know how this works, I've done this before. Or look at this research I've already done, how can I fit into your lab? And so I think that really does set kids apart and they really need to have those lab experiences to be competitive to get into graduate or post-secondary. Do you guys have any questions on this course or how it's similar or different to AP?
I have a very specific question. It's not even related to this course, but just scrupulous, you're talking about testing. Where's the testing conducted? The AP goes to, you know, you go to sites and things like that, is that just?
AP occurs just in different rooms in our building. IV has some different requirements that I'm not.
It'll be onsite.
It will be onsite, okay. But I think AP, they have like, AP Chem is Tuesday, May ninth at eight AM. I think there is a little more flexibility with IV. Don't we apply for a date? Is that, okay. So with AP, every student in the United States tests on the same day at the same time. IV has a little more of a window. I think this is a wonderful addition to the high-level science curriculum we're already providing. It's going to be different, it's rigorous in a different way. And I think if kids expect it to be like AP, they may be a little disappointed or confused at first, but I think it's a wonderful partnership and it gives them opportunities that AP doesn't provide. Okay, thank you. Thank you, you're on, that's a starting point. You're at, can you see?
A sample schedule. Just real quick, Bob, testing, please.
Oh, yeah, I just had one question. So if a student is considering, you know, if they're considering AP courses or if they're thinking about doing IV courses, is there a process that, or someone like that will sit down with them and kind of go over these things and explain the differences and how things are different? How does that work, like as far as?
I think, I want all of us teachers to do a good job when those course catalogs come out. Like, you know, does anyone, I do. Does anyone have any questions about AP Chem? Because I think it's a great course and I think you should take it. And I hear a lot of kids, I AP Chem, I'm not taking that. But you actually do get the kids like, well, tell me a little bit about it.
So it's more of just like, as they ask questions?
I always tell the students to go to student services, like, you know, or, you know, now I can say, go to Craig if they have interest. But most of the time I give them my skill. I tell them how great AP Chem is, how great AP Bio is, also the other courses. But I think their student service advisors, their.
We also have some upcoming informational sessions that we'll talk about in a few slides.
So I'll be over. One, if any student's going to pursue medical, and he has any inclination of possibly for medical, is going to meet with me within our building, just because of the. So it's, medical more than others is very exact in what you can do in high school that's going to benefit you at the next level. When can I do a CNA YA based on what I want to do one day, what college I might want to go to? First, when is it better to take sports exercise, health and do the IV program and take an AP Bio because I want to go to University of Chicago? Or, so it's really what the colleges and next level wants to see as well as employers, what certs they want if they're going to get you and train you in-house, which is now a huge way within purely health in particular. So unfortunately, more than any other career, this one is very dependent on what you want, right? And then you get to go down that road together. But it's, it's different just because of all of the jobs that we're in there. If you want to go play with fun, beautiful lines and go after just a certification and a high school degree, great, we can do that, right? Versus pre-med and trying to help those students balance, figure that out. From a testing standpoint, one of the biggest differences is we get to pick. So obviously with this program and starting with one strand, we're being very specific and conscious about what we're offering and who's teaching it in our building, who has the capacity right now. As the program grows, it gives us the opportunity to set testing. So we're not overwhelming our students. We can talk to them about time management of, if you're in this strand, you're going to test here and here. If you're in this strand, we're going to go here, here, we're going to reflect the project due here. So we can balance that, so we're not overwhelming our students the week of AP Bio test, that we're also going to have reflected project due, your presentation and the test. We can balance that and we have that freedom within IV.
I know it's always been difficult to squeeze in all of the curriculum before May ninth or whatever it is to, it's going to, you fall behind and you're in trouble.
And IV actually runs slightly faster as far as the testing and time.
That's good, we need like a dozen more dogs.
Cody's down, but I'm glad you're taking it. Real quick, when we look at a proposed schedule, what it would look like for a student looking for a certification. IV, this is purely an example. We don't know when the classes are going to fall, how the most access our students are interested in this program. But you're looking to have that career-related course, much like your youth apprenticeship, you get to take one. So if a student is doing a youth apprenticeship, their IV class will serve as their youth apprenticeship class. Youth apprenticeship serves as their IV class. So we watch each other on that one. If you're not in YA, have you want to go to UW pre-med? We're probably going to say, no, the YA is probably the best advice we can give with the information we have through UW Systems. We're going to say a career-related course now, looking at Bio Tech, some of our other advanced classes and how that can better serve supporting you in sports, exercise and health science. You have to have one a year. Then you see in year two, we are going to upload it a little more. Now, the reason we thought it was best to keep us in year two, you're going to find a lot of students are going to hit some core requirements, they're going to have their reactives. So now we're going to add what would be the business class to learn more of the business side of the healthcare field and HR and insurance and all those moving parts that go in and moving forward. We're going to learn that in our IV business manager class, which we know is going to serve as an elective class. So at that point is where we usually find more flexibility in the student's schedule is within their senior year, but we're also giving them a class. IV SL classes are now part of the UW system credits. So Whitewater's already showing IV business management. If you go for better on the test, you will receive free credits from there as well. And that's on the UW Health website landing page now. So we know that that's how we look at college credits. So we're still positioning our students to be successful on the other side. And we know that we're giving them something that's going to go with them if they have that aptitude to score. Once again, per year, you have that one career-related course. For example, we gave it here for a semester, a student has the option to take it either semester. As long as they take it, they're working towards their certification.
Are they still going to have the ability to get in the classes like music classes, the art classes, the A classes, all of those classes with all of this still going on?
So that's the biggest thing with supporting students is making sure the balance is there, especially when it comes to taking classes, showers, issues off. Taking band with, or doing this with Mr. Anderson, right? And having those opportunities, those, you're kind of referred to as, what are they called? Put it one on.
Well, and if you look, our band, I'm using music because that's what everyone's talking about. There's many more than just music, but band runs fourth and fifth period. That's what's run, it's run like that for the dawn of time. If you look at where we're placing our IV courses, it's not in fourth and fifth period, right? We kind of, we can look at when these, these classes run and I see will actually allow us to go, hey, you've got forty kids in music that also want to do this. You need to move this class so they can help with music. Like, we kind of know where these classes sit. Yes, can be challenged when you kind of, when you sew a class into a block because it can be challenging, but we have a pretty good sense over the last four or five years where these classes sit on a regular basis. I can tell you where band sits and where orchestra sits, part because of shared staff, which, you know, which is great. But also we know that like AP Bio, AP Chem are a couple of blocks. So there's a couple of periods that just work well for them. So knowing where those things sit, we can strategically put these IV courses there so kids do have a lot of options that allow them to have a really good selection. So we can be pretty strategic about it.
We also want to help our students strategize what courses are going to benefit them long-term. And by no means do we want to take away that, that sense of the whole student where they're not just giving you your core and what's going to make you great, but you're also giving them a thing that makes you happy, right? And that is a big thing for all of our students now more than ever. So we are very conscious of that, in particular of making sure that we have well-rounded students. But it's also important for the students to know their career outcomes and what elective should I be taking that are going to be most beneficial to me years thirteen and fourteen in life. And helping our students through ACP or four-year planning is going to kind of help set that up. And helping our students through ACT or 4-year planning is gonna kind of help set that up. So it's a, it's a whole heart, whole philosophy that overall, again, this is just about growing and building these programs so our students have access to careers.
Are there requirements, like some of our dual credit right now have the requirement, like if you miss so much class, you don't qualify for the credits? And I just think about like kids in sports, if they have to leave early and some where these like CTE classes fall in, like is that gonna cause us mathematical problems in making sure that we get the credits?
No, that's a great question. Like, well, if you have a snow day, use those, right? But cotton law has been dealing with it. And what we know is the IB is they understand how classes function, how time of day functions, kids coming and going. It's not individually line monitoring, right? Jesse's not in class, she's not playing 58 minutes now. Right? So it's an ongoing process. But as Amy alluded to, it's a fast-moving, just like AP. So it's gonna be on us as educators to be strategic in how we're supporting the students where it lands in the school days. If it's gonna be part of that process of we're gonna have misses for this part of the year or that, then we just, we have to do our due diligence as educators to make sure we're supporting the students.
And we're also very fortunate to have our second period every day. So if students are missing a specific class period, they can then request to go to whatever instructor, instructor they need to meet with to make up those minutes as well. So next steps, we have some different, well, Craig is gonna be the star of the show. There is some different work-based learning and IB learning sessions just to talk about overall career readiness. Those will be taking place in October, November and December. So this will be a really great opportunity for us to really talk about our upcoming IB program. And then if we do have questions from students about those specific IB courses, that would be the opportunity to answer those on the spot. Craig is also going to be running some different stat sessions for our students. So if we have any families that are unable to make any of those main sessions, you know, we have kids that are very, students that are very involved, we will be able to connect with them during stat. Again, we do have our authorization, our consulting visit with Lori Ainsworth, which will take place on November 4th and 5th. And you'll be able to meet her here as well. And we have a meeting set up with Good Morning Mount Hora in February. And we will continue to have some ongoing professional development. So Craig will be completing the reflective project training online in May. And then there is some different, and Kim Hillary, correct? There is also, as was kind of mentioned, as we're going through this, there are some different language development criteria that is coming out. And once that is posted, that training will take place. So that would be with Marcy Brett. And as we continue to talk about what this program looks like for our students and our community, if we ever wanted to add more pathways, then we'd be looking at seeing if there's an opportunity to add additional DP courses in the future. In addition to all of those next steps, if you haven't checked out our IB website, the link is available for you there. There's also some different FAQs with characteristics of these successful IB students, as well as our access and inclusion policy. Any questions?
So that, the last policy there, I mean, that was one of the big things when we talked about it initially, is that this isn't a program necessarily just for a certain part of our population, this is for the whole population. So I'm just looking at like that exam and schedule, how do you guys envision that working for someone who may need additional help, whatever it might be? How does that look?
Yeah.
Is it the same as what we have now?
Yeah. So any student that has an additional accommodation plan, whether that's through a 504 or an IEP, we'd be looking at those accommodations, meeting with the teacher. Fine, again, we already talked about how that reflective essay within the course or the reflective project, if someone wanted to go through the full IB CP program. If they're a better verbal presenter, we might be working on writing that 1,500-word essay and then working on recording that seven-minute video. So we'd be really talking about structures within writing, whether we're gonna be accessing text-to-speech, what other components can we have to help students set up their reflective project essay, utilizing graphic organizers, having more one-on-one check-ins during stat time. So a lot of what we already are encompassing to support students with additional educational needs is what we've continued to do with the IB program.
And I have to assume, and I'm speaking a little uncertainly here, but for the AP test, any accommodations that students have in school are accommodated from the test day. And I have to assume that AP would have that same policy.
Yeah, IB has that as well. So if a student has it within an accommodation plan for double time, we would apply for double time and that would be awarded for an IB exam.
Those have to be applied for on an individual basis?
Yeah. And that's, that's...
And if you do?
Yeah. And that's what we do with ACT and all, all testing is we submit those accommodations for approval.
I anticipate that quite a few students are gonna be interested. And I know that we kind of wanna cap it. What are we thinking in terms of numbers and...
Yeah.
Are we gonna deal with if we want money and we have 15? Wow!
I think we, we want all of our IB courses to be open to everyone. But also if we have students that are taking the full IB CP program in that pathway, they do need to have access to those courses in order to get the certification. So if we have students that are making that commitment, we'd be filling those seats first. And then from there, we would probably have to have a conversation to see if we need another section, but that'd be a conversation for Cody. Cook at his face right now.
Okay.
I agree that we would have a great problem on our...
Yes.
That's the case.
Definitely, yes.
There are schools that work through an application process and things of that nature. I personally hope that's not what we come to. We would wanna continue to open this pathway to all students interested in this field, especially with the support that you get in IB. You'll find in a lot of communities that may not test great in AEP have IB. And we wanna be able to make sure we have access to those students that might not be going to that and buy more comfort as to where they get in IB because of PPS and some of the things we have in there. But it'd be a great problem.
Do you, do you think some of those, like an application process, some of that kind of stuff is useful on the front end regardless of whether you use it to say no or anything? But because it's, it's part of those personal skills?
Sure.
Would it make sense to develop those procedures anyway, regardless of how we use them?
I think if we, now, kind of, Amy, you're trying to speak about the cup. I think anytime that currently, especially if you're building something new, you put a step in between, it might just deflect a couple of the students that we might want in the program. All right? Those are already the students who aren't doing stuff yet. So just keep it in easy access, have the conversation with counselors or their teachers. And the support we're getting from our CTE department, I've never seen a more selfless CTE group paying us all for this program, saying, "All right, say like, there's more by a group that you're opening more options for kids that could be out in your room and they're exactly, well, it's what's best for them. We don't have medical on our side." So the support we're getting, so those conversations are gonna take place in those rooms and they're gonna send them to us.
Well, you have medical if you weld your hand.
I think just to go, if we, if we get to that point, I think I'd want it to be more of like a commitment, like something that reflects the wanting to go through the full IB CP program. But again, I don't think we want to have barriers right now.
Sure.
Because we wanted to see how we can just launch and grow this program.
I have another question. Do you think that we have enough partnerships with businesses and organizations in town to do our service opportunity or their service component?
I mean, I know we've added new ones, but I...
I feel really confident saying we're not prepared to onboard employers at the level that we want to. Just from the perspective, our course outlines are completed as of today, they're in Lori's hands. And she's gonna let us know what labs look like, what these projects look like. And that's where we can find out, do we need a partner here? Is there an opportunity to send kids to a site, whether it's for this partner, for this one to start doing one of their units or to work on a reflective project or whatever it may be? Once we can identify, the process next week on the 4th and 5th is gonna teach us a lot. And then as our teachers then know it's theirs to move forward with, we're gonna be able to start getting in the depths of what lessons are gonna look like and how to properly use our partners. So it's true, iron sharpens iron.
Every time I've met with the Upland Hills president, she assures us that they're all in. And so we just need to begin to get that fine-tuning of our offerings so that then we can expand that partnership with them having a presence here in Mount Hora and it will make it even easier. So timing is just working at a really good pace. You know, a couple reflections if you don't mind as well. I really appreciate the all-means-all in the Board of Education's mission statement. When we were beginning to vision for this program, we initially thought about going with the diploma program. And we recognized that was catering maybe to the same clientele as was the advanced placement program. And we listened to the board, we listened to the community and their feedback relative to the strategic plan survey. They told us they wanted programs to prepare their students for when they get out of high school. And then we took some time, you and I did, to visit with the business community and ask them, "What are you looking for?" If this program doesn't model that, I don't know what does. And I'm excited about the presentation that we're gonna do in February to Good Morning Mount Hora because I have such great hope for this program. The second piece is when I began the IB program 25 years ago, I feel a little old right now, when I was a high school principal, one of the things that I learned was we can always expect feedback. And so when we come to visit with our good friends from the IB program, Lori, next week, we're gonna expect a laundry list of things that we need to fix and make even better. And what I appreciate about these remarkable professionals is they've got the growth mindset. We want them to tell us how we can get better because we're asking a lot of our kids, we're leveraging a lot from our community, we're leveraging a lot from our business partners, and we owe it to them from the accountability side to, to really do a fantastic job. So I'm confident that when we meet next week, there will be a number of things that we'll need to be considering as we move forward. And that brings me to my last point, and that has to do with leadership. I have such great faith in all of you for all that you've done, especially that which has gone unnoticed. I know all the behind-the-scenes meetings you're having, all the trainings you're going to. And, and this is just a small representation of a really stellar team that I think is ready to roll up their sleeves and dig in and work shoulder to shoulder with our young people to give them another world-class experience here in Mount Hora. So thank you, board members, for your visionary efforts. Thank you for allowing us to travel down this pathway. I'm excited about the problem that we may have for the numbers of students, but you know what? We're evolutionary, we're not revolutionary. We're gonna take our time, we're gonna do this right because our kids are too important otherwise. So tip of the hat to you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Please, you're just retaping.
And if you all want this beautiful handout that Craig and Aubrey...
That's what we, hand out at those dates, always speaking, parent caregivers. Just understanding what work-based learning is, you've added to other CTE, CTE clubs in the last year in this district. We've, it's ordered for FCC. Sam Schultz just started up and she's grown. So we have, even our clubs are starting to expand career pathways. So, and that obviously will...
And one last question I wanted to ask. Did I hear you say that you're asking to meet with all students who are interested in some sort of medical?
Yeah, students start to look at medical. And again, I'm gonna be hosting those stats. And we're waiting until after the second parent caregiver night. So they can't say, "Well, we don't need to go, I already went." Right? So we're trying to hold that off. We'll talk more about our direct patient care pathway that we're gonna be able to offer, how to get involved, what that means to students. But then as they come through just in our building for CNA, youth apprenticeship, we're decentralizing the information because it happens with Jody in one wing and then down with Satish and Carrie who are awesome and helping us carry this. So just working together collaboratively and trying to find one answer for students so they're not be-bopping around the, getting ping pong through the building.
Board members, any other questions? Moving on, information advocacy report, number of students receiving industry-recognized credentials and professional certificates. Sarah, I feel that even, hopefully Craig will just do up talking for you.
No, I'm very fortunate, sorry to do this with me and have Craig with me as well on this report. But as we get started, when we think about IB, when we think about the advanced course for peace, this is the second quarter of our X report that looks at area. Last month, it was EP testing. And we'll have IB information in there as we start to test and IB happen, of course, work. But this is the counterpart, looking more at the work-based learning side, youth apprenticeship side. We've had some additions to the report. Indicator one is looking at both industry-recognized credentials and professional certificates. In the past, we were just reporting on the CNA. This year, with help of Craig and our CTE department, we're able to start to really record and monitor other types of certification areas. So now we're gonna start to include more in these reports to really track them, to get an overall picture for you all. Below that as well, then, we start to indicate what those specific certificates were, so you can see those. And we're also indicating which certificates are act 59 reimbursable. What that means with it being act 59 reimbursable is that it's part of the Department of Workforce Development certificates where any certification that gets turned into the state and the Department of Workforce Development, we can receive up to $1,000 per recent graduate that earns that certificate, which is huge because that 59 goes back into programming, it goes back into IB, it goes back into youth apprenticeship. So it really feeds itself and sustains itself, which is a nice feature. So most of those, as you can see, part of act 59 reimbursable. I'm gonna go to Craig to talk more about the indicator two, which is that workplace learning experience. And he's learned particularly since this morning, he's been almost talking about youth apprenticeship.
Yeah, so our youth apprenticeship program, students have to complete 450 hours. If maybe they can switch jobs and mentors and continue their hours process, as you see our numbers and the students that we have active just in our youth apprenticeship. So the first one is our work cooperatives, which we have in both business and in agriculture right now. Our numbers reflect that of agriculture as far as when it comes to cooperatives. So then when you start looking at the youth apprenticeship program, working through the 16 career clusters, we have a really nice signage in our CTE hallway of the students that are currently involved in these programs, who they are, who they're working for and in what career cluster. So we have a really nice representation of a lot of broad programming that our students are doing. You right now will see that our numbers for the year '32, of 70, oh, last year, hang up, sorry. We are gonna be slightly ahead of that. And we just added two more youth apprentices, both seniors from our career exploration fair. So we had two seniors gain youth apprentices. Again, our counselors are so good at figuring out how that can work using the study halls to make these opportunities available to our students. We are able to add a couple which would normally be late. The gentleman had opportunities in their schedule to make it work. And everyone in our building worked to give them the opportunity they wanted, which is really good because it's, it's both of them, right, in their career aspects. So our youth apprenticeship is the opportunity to earn elective credits in place of a class to be out working as part of, you have to take one course that uplifts their programming. So a career-related course, just like we saw in the IB, and that's why we can use those to cancel each other out within that program. Any questions on our youth apprenticeship process?
And then our third indicator in this report is looking at those work-based learning partnerships. And we had a good conversation just a few minutes ago, Upland Hills and then other employers. But the data we're pulling here is more specifically towards youth apprenticeship. We had 26 business partners last school year, now it's 31. I know we heard back in August and July, we might have 65 potential youth apprenticeship kiddos. We were really trying to find even more business partners, but as IB work gets out... We were really trying to find even more business partners, but as IB work gets out and that youth apprenticeship is more and more, I'm sure we'll get more of these partners stepping up to the plate. This report then will also look at additional partnerships as we start to formulate and formalize what those are, whether it's through the CP program like IB, whether it's job shadowing, all those pieces will, it will be then layered into this report as we move forward. And that's all we have for this one.
Craig, did you, I know at our last community coalition meeting, you had mentioned with the job ready app, how that was going to start being a place where employers can reach out to students, or is this versus that?
It's a process, so we are, it's now the, CTE, we did a meeting during our staff, whatever they like, we did to meet, and Jody brought it in, introduced it, everyone logged in, got comfortable with it. For their career exploration fair, every contact to a business partner was made through job shadow. That is how our students track their work hours, but eventually what we're talking about is giving it so that it's a two-way communicator to our employers for job postings, but it's a way for our students to access employers, but it's centralizing the youth apprenticeship process, the partnerships that we're going to have through CTE, and CTE has already uploaded all of their partners and updated their information. So we're good, and we're up and coding out a course again. But what you're going to see here shortly is that Dane County Consortium has four of our biggest schools that we work with in that consortium are bringing job ready next year. So we're actually just a year change ahead, but it'll, it'll become a more consistent thing, but we have to get comfortable more.
Oh, absolutely. I just remember that, I remembered that.
Our students are whole, they're hours on.
That's like said, I want to stop shop to fill the paperwork and signatures, do silver court hours, IB hours, all these, all these kinds of things, all this nice stuff, just that students can see in real time.
And we can bring it to their Chromebook apps, or their apps in school eventually as well.
I'd be remiss if I didn't give a tip of the hat to Craig, Aubrey, and Sarah for their work in really revisioning our career readiness website that takes into account both that side of the house, but also the IB. This was something that was requested by the Board of Education. If you get a chance to go ahead and scan that little QR code here, you will be taken right to that website, and I think you'll be very pleased. Trying to make it more understanding to families, more understanding to students, they can understand the progressive nature of what the students will be experiencing throughout their high school career. Tip of the hat to you all.
Any questions for Sarah and Craig?
One question that came to mind during that review that ties into this, just thinking about like laddering back to younger ages and preparing kids so that they're ready for this kind of experience, I don't know what kind of steps we've taken that way, or if we feel comfortable, you know, with where we're at, or there's stuff that we want to work on.
Go first, Sarah. So, when we're doing our education for planning plan this past summer, one part that we added into action steps was to have our quarterly meetings. We have one coming up, we're going to have Chris and I are coming over, and we're going to talk through the four-year plan and how we do better with that. We have more of a live, breathing document. So starting more eighth grade and even lower, sharing these opportunities are going to be important to the apprentices.
Yeah, I met with Chris Ann after we were curious to teach and learning how we schedule the process we go through, and we have found over time in previous work that in order to access some of the students in demographic that may not be having the dinner table conversation, then we got to bring them to dinner table. So I've been coming into the middle school to present to all eighth graders in social studies, tops by house in December with Chris Ann to go over all of these programs. Those students are going to start learning about what is available to them in junior year and eighth grade, and then Cody and I are going to, is going to help bring back our sophomores to reevaluate where they are in their four-year plan, just because of the vast changes that come your junior year in scheduling and planning and starting to be more career-focused. So we're going to start working with our students' four-year plan, starting in eighth grade and regularly continuing with them every two, to reevaluate where their interests are, what classes might best support that. So we're going to start that process earlier.
IB would ultimately be to do a backwards design to our IB program, if we have an IB program in the middle school, and then continue to add, but first things first, right? We're going to do this really well first.
I also have a comment, too, like on the YA, you probably don't know this, but back in 2018, I worked for U.S. Livestock Genetics Ex Part in Mount Hore, and I was Healy Schulerberg's mentor through the YA program. And then my son went through it for agriculture a few years back, so I just, I've seen it from both of those sides, and it's such a valuable program, so thank you.
The IB program for the 4K is going to have to focus on toy making or something.
I'd be here, it's going to work. They take the YA North Pole.
Gun and gun.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Number seven, moving on to our action items. Scott? Scott, would you like to come down? I think you're up next.
Well, first of all, I had the opportunity at finance last Monday to thank people at the finance committee. That was my chance to thank everybody else here. As you know, our budget process starts basically at the turn of the calendar year. It has an inflow depending on how state funding looks like. We were able to, over the course of the spring, not only solidify a budget based on a number of seductions, but we were able to then move forward and actualize first with a working budget that brought us during a new meeting in August, as I just kind of reminisce through the calendar. And then obviously, some really important data comes out between enrollment in September, property values and state aid on October 15. That allows us to then come to the board and have a conversation as we do every year. Usually it's the fourth Monday in October, so thank you for your flexibility in meeting tonight as a board to talk about exactly this. So, the first thing that happens when we look at our budget is with those variables that have become known in September and October, as you know, we now need to revise our budget according to enrollment and the amount of state aid that we'll be receiving. So what we do is we take our original budget that we worked on back in the spring that went into effect in July 1, and we're able to make our modifications accordingly. So, you'll, you may recall that, you've seen this format in the past, this is essentially a requirement that when we look to make changes to any specific line items in our budget, we use this as a summary table. So it's only the line items in our budget that we're making revisions to that show up in these categories that DPI requires. We have about 3,000 accounts in our, in our budget, this is a very, very small summarized version of that. The revisions that we're looking to make that you see in front of you, we talked in detail at the finance committee last Monday, so thank you, those of you that were able to be there to talk through those details. For this October's revisions, we're only looking at making revisions to our general fund. You may recall, you know, we have specialization, we have food service, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So you'll see that the top portion of this table has to do with modified revenues that we need to make from our original budget. Most of the revisions have to do with not only our October 15 state aid official amount that we've learned from DPI, we're recognizing that here. But then it also allows us to solidify a levy. And so, that in combination with a few of our state grants and a few of our federal grants, that we did not know their allocations back in the spring and summer, but we do now, we're able to reflect that in our revenue. Overall, you'll see that our revenue will be going up just over $437,000. With that comes changes in expenditures, right? Because our expenditure budget is driven by revenue, and 90% of our revenue budget is based on property taxes and state aid. The changes that we see every year at this time is pretty common. We hire staff during the summer, we account for that. People make changes to their benefits in the summer, either because they're new hires and we see changes, or they make changes in their personal lives and we reflect that here. Anytime we make changes to grants, we have to, that's the revenue side, but we have to account for, are we going to use those dollars, and that's the expenditure side. So we have both a stabilization state grant as well as our serve grant at the federal level. Both of those grants are accounted for in our expenditures as well. Back in the spring, we didn't know we would have those grants, so now we do, and we have to account for those. And then the last one on the expenditure side that we need to reflect is the changes in open enrollment and the voucher program at the state level and what that means for our budget. Overall, for this part of the budget, we're maintaining a stable, flat budget, in other words, revenues and expenses are both coming up at the same amount, so we're not seeing any changes. Keep in mind, there is a $290,000 deficit planned in our budget. Fund balance will go down $290,000. That is because of the two buses that we're now receiving. Last fiscal year, that cost the balance to go up, we're now utilizing those dollars this year. And remember, fund balances just each year goes up or down depending on if we have more revenues than expenditures, or if we have more expenditures than revenues. So it's an accounting piece and nothing more. But this, the purpose of this is to show that for outside of that $290,000 assigned fund balance, we're maintaining a stable fund balance here with our budget. So pause right there and ask if there's any questions. As you may recall, it's very summary-based. This then ties into the first of the three motions, first of the three categories of motions that you'll consider, which is the revised budget for October.
Scott just indicated we have several motions throughout these, I'm going to take them each separately.
Well, thank you for always giving me the opportunity to, to share this with you and to modify your board schedule on October to meet that October 15 date that DPI gives us every year.
So Scott, we are looking for a motion to approve the budget transfer.
And that is part of motion, well, thank you, yeah.
Does anyone like my motion?
I'll move to approve.
Adam moved and Carly seconded a motion approving the revised 2425 revenue budget totaling $47,497, expenditure budget totaling $48,131,418, including all funds. This is a roll call. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And also a yes. Moving on to the certification of the 2425 tax levy.
So you may recall again that because we need that October 15 state aid amount, that helps us determine what our tax levy will be for fund ten. But our tax levy can really consist of two buckets. It's the general fund levy, again, October 15 allows us to calculate that general fund levy. But there's also the second bucket, which is our fund 39 levy. And our fund 39 levy, we call our mortgage payment, for lack of a better word. The mortgage payment is our principal interest payments under debt, and certainly the direction that we go with the referendum will determine what that fund 39 levy will look like. So therefore, we'll have to reconsider that in the outcome of our program.
Any questions or comments, Scott? Would anyone like to make?
Oh, I got one quick one, I just was curious, what's the process for, so if, if the referendum passes, do we then need to go through as part of one of the other two adjustments? Once we have interest rates, all that kind of stuff figured out, there will be further adjustments?
Yeah, yeah, great question. So if it, if it modified, if it required a modification to the levy, that's where the motion allows for that. As far as what it means for the budget, we would want to hold off, you know, immediately coming back with revisions of the levy, only because there's going to be a lot of accounting transactions that come for the, the bond sale or the financing. And so rather than truly coming to you every month, we'll hold off for a few months so we have a package of what all those financial transactions will look like, and then we'll modify the motion accordingly.
So, we need to take each of these separately, correct?
Yes, so I would move for motion to a, I would let you read it just now.
Okay. Motion by Joel, or Joel moved and Leah seconded a motion that if the referendum on November 5, 2024 is not approved, then the Mount Hore Area School District levy will be an amount of $18,472,342 in taxes against the property of said district to meet the approved budget for the 2425 school year. This tax levy is $233,678 higher than the 2324 tax levy, which totaled $18,238,664. This tax levy necessitates a mill rate of $7.57 per $1,000 of equalized value compared to a mill rate of $8.11 per $1,000 of equalized value for the 2324 school year. This is also a roll call. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And also a yes. Motion for two B's.
We're good, boy.
Yeah, yeah. You're so well.
Okay. Leah moved and Carly seconded a motion that if the referendum on November 5, 2024 is approved, then the Mount Hore Area School District levy will be an amount of $20,96,437 in taxes against the property of said district to meet the approved budget for the 2425 school year. This tax levy is $1,857,773 higher than the 2324 tax levy, which totaled $18,238,664. This tax levy necessitates a mill rate of $8.24 per $1,000 of equalized value compared to a mill rate of $8.11 per $1,000 of equalized value for the 2324 school year. Roll call. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And also a yes. All right. Moving on to seven C, designation of fund equity. One more motion.
Yeah, yeah. So there's a number of different types of fund equity. As I mentioned just a few minutes ago, our assigned fund equity at $290,000 accounts for a very specific piece of business. So this is the other piece of business that accounts for, that has an inflow each and every year regarding our expenditure budget. I'm also very appreciative that finance committee and other committees, quite frankly, understand the sensitivity of it. When we go to bonds, for example, our 2017 referendum, if the referendum next week is approved, we'll also go to bond council. The financial stability of an organization based on, again, not the savings, but an accounting measure of where we stand with expenditure and revenues every year is really important. So I appreciate the sensitivity that you all have to it because getting a really solid bond rating like we've had in the past, it's been fantastic, and it's been a huge interest saver for our community, so thank you for your sensitivity to it. This does not have to do with the assigned fund balances, you can see it's again, assigned fund balance.
Any questions? I will move on with the motion. Sarah moved and Adam seconded a motion to apply the projected $7,176,221.30 being 19.6% of the general fund expenditure budget as unassigned fund balance to meet cash flow needs. Roll call. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And IBs. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, everybody.
Board members, I just want to make mention for anyone who might be listening in, which is, you know, we're We've been going out and talking about a projected mill rate of $8.68 more than what the current mill rate is. And this is projected, if the referendum were to be successful, to be $8.24. What gives? Why the change? And the truth of the matter is that this would be the first of many draws that would eventually, over time, get us to the projected mill rate of which we've been speaking about to our community. So to know that that's the maximum exposure to our taxpayers. Our belief is, as Associate Principal, Associate Superintendent DeYoung had mentioned, because of the great fiscal stewardship of this board, we do anticipate more favorable interest rates than the one that we penciled in as a four and a half percent on any loan that hopefully will bring back some of that interest back to our communities. I just wanted people to understand, well, why is there an inconsistency in messaging? That's the rationale. There has to be a couple of draws in the event that we're fortunate enough to pass that refer.
If I remember correctly, if the referendum goes past, our mill rate still will be pretty reasonable compared to other districts in the area.
Yeah, great recollection, Sarah. And in fact, against our 13 comparables, we would still be second lowest in the region.
All right, number eight, substance comments. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Number nine, future agenda items. If there is anything that you would like to discuss, please let Dr. Stann know or I know. And then number 10, our schedule of next meetings. Anything that you'd like to highlight?
Not tonight, thank you.
I had safety involved, this is virtual, but if we meet in person, this will be right before this one.
Thank you.
Number 11, executive session. Contemplated closed session per section 19.851 B.C. Considering dismissal, devotion, licensing, or discipline of any public employee or person licensed by a board of court or commission with investigation of charges against such person for stealing, grand, or devoting, or universe to secondment, and taking a formal action of any such manner, providing that the backseat member or other public employee with personal license is given actual or with any evidentiary hearing which may be held prior to final action being taken and of any medium which final action. Notice shall contain a statement that the person has the right to demand that the evidentiary hearing or meeting be held in open session. This paragraph and paragraph F do not apply to any such evidentiary hearing or meeting where the employee or person has any requests that an open session be held. C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Does someone like to make a motion to the executive session? It's all motion.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Sarah. Roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carly, yes. And also a yes. It is 8:03, so let's speed back in.